Welcome to the City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1328, Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Let the minutes reflect that all council members are present. Item number two would be minutes. You've all received copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we would move to the third item, presentation, first of those being Business of the Month Award, Megan Construction Company, Mr. Paul Brim.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. We're very thrilled tonight to be honoring Megan Construction Company. I think all of us are familiar with Megan. They're celebrating an important achievement this year. They were founded in 1993 by entrepreneur and community leader Evans Nawalkwell. The Megan Construction Company recently celebrated its 25th anniversary. Evans' story is truly inspirational. I think some of you might be familiar with it. After coming to this country from Nigeria to attend Texas A&amp;M University, he spent 12 years with one of the more successful and larger construction companies in the country. However, he always dreamed of owning and operating his own business, so he struck out of his own in 1993, starting the Megan Construction Company in the basement of his home. From that start and its humble beginnings, Megan Construction has grown to over 30 different, having 30 different construction professionals on their staff, working out of the offices located here in Forest Park. And today, his company manages construction projects valued at over $65 million. Megan Construction is well-respected for its commitment to quality, integrity, diversity, and teamwork, and consequently, this award-winning firm has been involved in unique and important projects throughout the country and especially our region. They have earned a reputation as a respected and ethical construction manager. Megan's been an integral part of construction teams for some of greater Cincinnati's more impressive projects. Some of these you're probably familiar with, including Fountain Square in downtown, construction of the Sharonville Convention Center, Great American Ballpark, Princeton High School Campus, and many other projects. Of course, right now, they're working on the project right next door to us with the Winwood High School project, so we're certainly thrilled to see that. From design and estimation to construction and project management, the expert team at Megan has the capability and experience to manage any size construction project. So tonight, it is indeed our pleasure to recognize Megan Construction Company for its many contributions to our city, our county, and our region over the past 20 years, 25 years. And many of you know Evans personally. You know that he's always on the run. He couldn't be with us tonight, but we do have Fleet Fangman. Fleet is the Vice President of Finance and Administration for the company. I'd like to invite her up to accept the award.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The City of Forest Park Business of the Month, Megan Construction Company, in recognition of the company's contributions to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. We thank you for your service and your stay in Forest Park and wish that you will with us for many, many more years. Congratulations again, and thank you.
It's indeed my pleasure to accept this award on behalf of Megan. And while I can't take the place of Evans, I would at least like to stand up and make sure that we were able to receive this in person tonight. So, thank you.
Next presentation would be holiday decorations, and taking care of the chores usual is Second Vice Mayor Denise Holt, who is also Chair of the Ladies of the Beautification.
Good evening. As I call your name, I think it's best that I just call everybody that receive an award because I don't want to miss anybody, even though they're not highlighted as being here. I don't want to take a chance. James and Peaches Sutherland, Springdale for Holiday Spirit. Sharon and Mark Schmetzer, Springside Holiday Spirit. Kenneth and Maddie Monroe, Ravensburg Holiday Spirit. Teresa Davis, Key Ridge, Most Illuminated.
Congratulations.
The next one is Debbie and David Dixon on Hitchcock for Most Creative. Donald C. Quinn, Smiley Holiday Spirit. Bill Broker, Folkeston. Best Decorated, I'm so glad I did this because you weren't highlighted as being here. Jennifer Spears and Marion Kramer, Embassy Holiday Spirit. Betty Dunn and Sons Embassy Most Illuminated. Yeah, I saw that one.
Betty, how are you?
It's here.
I've seen you three times now.
On the bottom.
Thanks, Betty, and thanks for making Forest Park beautiful.
Jason and Kelly Hodgits, Sharon, Best Decorated. Mary H. Sims, Cascade Holiday Spirit. Ed Debo, Mill, Most Creative. There was somebody, we didn't get a name, on Hitchcock, Best Decorated. And the Moore family on Cascade, Most Creative. She's here, too. I saw the Moore. It says Moore.
Thank you very much for making Forest Park beautiful.
I would like to thank everyone. I would like to thank everybody that participated in the decoration contests, and thank you for making Forest Park beautiful during the holidays. We look forward to coming around and judging you next year. Put some more lights out, and if you know anybody that needs some lights, tell your neighbor, put their lights out, too. Tell them to, that you're going to beat them this year and watch them work. Thank you all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all for, all of those of you who participated, those who were present and those who were not. And as Vice Chair Holt said, hopefully more people will put out declarations next year and the years to come. We're about to go to item number four, which is communications from the public. You're all welcome to stay. Don't feel like you have to. If you need to or want to leave, feel free to do so. Okay, this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes.
Ready?
Just a minute, please.
Okay.
Give her time to...
My name is Monique Masonhalter. I live in the Green Hills neighborhood, across the street from West Sharon Road, where you provided a permit to contractors to install fiber for Verizon to install 5G. You may recall, I spoke at your December 17 meeting with two other Green Hills homeowners about this. None of us have received a response from you yet. We have questions and concerns about insurance coverage and liability if and when something goes wrong with the operation of this 5G infrastructure. Since we spoke here on December 17, contractors have installed fiber through the pipeline, which indicates transmitters may be installed and operating soon near our homes. We want to know exactly when that's going to be. In regard to liability, Verizon made a statement in 2014 that has been posted on the Environmental Health Trust website. Quote, "We are subject to a significant amount of litigation, which could require us to pay significant damages or settlements." Quote, "Our wireless business also faces personal injury and consumer class action lawsuits relating to alleged health effects of wireless phones or radio frequency transmitters and class action lawsuits that challenge marketing practices and disclosures relating to alleged adverse health effects of handheld wireless phones. We may incur significant expenses in defending these lawsuits. In addition, we may be required to pay significant awards or settlements." This is going up near our neighborhood, and we weren't consulted, and we don't need it. If you weren't aware, last week, legislation was introduced, HR 530, the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019. This would overturn recently passed legislation limiting the ability of local governments to regulate the deployment and installation of 5G wireless infrastructure. I know that all elected officials take an oath to protect the welfare of residents, and some even swear to God when taking this oath. So I'm asking you to immediately alert all residents living near 4G and 5G small cell installation within Forest Park city limits, including my neighborhood, to be informed of this new legislation, so everyone can decide whether or not they want to contact state and federal officials about it. Since 2017, over 200 doctors and scientists in the U.S. and worldwide have asked for a moratorium on 5G installation due to health and environmental risks. Last year, a 5G court case in Gateshead, England was won after council members had allowed 5G to be installed in street lamps and residents became sick. Some women even had stillbirths. For the last few years, security experts have strongly advised against installing 5G and the Internet of Things because of its almost 75% failure rate. Despite this, a few weeks ago, 5G started being promoted as necessary for national security, even by controversial radio personality Glenn Beck. However, yesterday, the New York Times published an op-ed written by former Federal Communications Commission Chairman and longtime 5G proponent Tom Wheeler, and he said 5G is not secure. Everyone should be informed about all of this, don't you think? I also remind you that current FCC safety guidelines were written over 20 years ago when cell phones were 1G and most people didn't own them. Cell towers were few and far between, and Wi-Fi wasn't everywhere. These guidelines do not apply to how we use or expose to today's wireless technology. Online documentary Generation Zap provides more details about this. Senator Patrick Colback of Michigan has given congressional testimony on research proving harm from exposure to 5G. Senator Blumenthal of Connecticut asked the FCC to provide evidence that 5G is safe before more is installed. Burlington, Massachusetts residents stopped Verizon from installing 5G in their community. An attorney who represented Verizon said the company took exception with some of the conditions, particularly the recertification process, which would charge Verizon a nominal fee to get certified each year. Three community councils in California refused to install 5G based on health concerns. And most insurance companies do not cover sources of electromagnetic fields like radio frequencies. They exclude coverages, coverage for illnesses caused by long-term EMF or non-ionizing radiation exposure, and these are classified as pollutants alongside smoke, chemicals, and asbestos. You have to purchase additional pollution liability or pollution enhancement coverage for these sources. Apparently, they also don't pay for damages caused by artificially generated electromagnetic, magnetic, and electrical energy that damages, disrupts, or interferes with any device, appliance system, electronic wire, or network utilizing satellite or cellular technology. I hope you will consider all of this and respond quickly to our questions and concerns, especially when this is going to be installed near our neighborhood, our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council?
Good evening. My name is Anna Steele. I live at 150 June Field over in Green Hills, and I'm coming to also address the fiber that is being installed or has been installed there on Sharon Road. But before I talk about that, thank you for serving our communities. I appreciate what each of you do, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns. So that fiber has been installed there on Sharon Road, and I'm disappointed that it's there, and I'm also concerned because it's set up for 5G, and there aren't any residents living, like, on the Forest Park side of Sharon Road there, but the Green Hills residents are living just across the road there, and that's going to affect them. There's a lot of research that already shows that this radiation is bad for our health. It causes cancer. The daily exposure has increased, according to a professor in Sweden, a quintillion, like, one with 18 zeros behind it. So I guess a question for Forest Park is, do you have evidence to document the safety of this experimental technology? I'm really concerned about the health implications this, these technologies will be producing. Also, there are security data, privacy risks with this stuff. So I know that in Burlington, Massachusetts, the community got together and was able to tell Verizon, hey, we don't want this here. I think they were able to say, you know, we're going to up the fee or whatever. So there's, there's a way to do it if we want to, to do it. Also, there is new legislation, a bill, HR 530, that would empower our local communities. And I would really love it if you guys could do what you can to inform the citizens here to contact their representatives about this legislation so that they can be more involved in these decisions. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public to address the council? Hearing none, two things. First and foremost, we, you have not heard anything from us because we've taken no action. It is on our agenda tonight for a first reading. However, I don't want to disillusion you that, you know, even when this come back for a vote, that, that, you know, our action is going to be, going to address those things that we can legally do. I would, at this point, ask our law director, Mr. Wyckoff, if you would, could you briefly, I know you've sent us information, could you briefly recap what you have sent to us regarding this, actually, we're talking about the issue of the right of way?
There's numerous issues. There's been some State of Ohio legislation that was overruled because they violated, the legislative body violated the single-subject rule. They threw in some protections for pet stores and kennels and things like that. So that was stricken down. But meanwhile, the FCC, who has ultimate authority over any type of communication such as this, has actually gotten more strict about what a municipality can or can't do with respect to installation of any type of communication system, including 5G. In contrast to that, legislators, municipalities, citizen groups, and the businesses themselves got together and worked out a compromise over the bill that was struck down in Ohio, passed a new bill, which is now in effect, and that new Ohio bill allows some restrictions, which, of course, the city retained the services of Ice Miller, and they're the leading law firm here in Ohio with respect to these regulations. And they were on all the committees. There is an allowance for the city to pass some guidelines, and I think those are in your package, which are not the actual zoning code information, but that's, those are guidelines. And there still are restrictions, and believe it or not, the FCC restrictions are still greater than the State of Ohio legislation. So we are open to the potential of a lawsuit by doing what regulating is possible through the Ohio Vice Code, because the FCC could file a federal lawsuit against all the municipalities saying, you've got to get, and the states, saying you've got to get rid of your local legislation. This is an FCC issue, it's not even yours. So we are now confronted with, we are required to pass this legislation, otherwise, we have no legislation. And we, and without this legislation, we have no control over guidelines or anything else. At least, this is an attempt that is going on throughout Ohio for some control given to the cities to, to issue guidelines on, on all of these issues, time clock procedures, everything else. If we don't do anything, then we have nothing. We have no control. There were some issues mentioned about health issues, insurance issues, those are not our issues. We, we are not here to regulate commercial businesses when we aren't even allowed to do that. So if there are insurance issues or issues regarding health issues, any citizen, anywhere can take that to their legislative representative and have the legislation look at it. But unfortunately, at this point in time, we need some regulations here in the city, and we can't wait until more lawsuits are filed, if they are, insurance issues are discussed, if they are, health issues are discussed, if they are. This is a recommendation from the firm we retained, Ice Miller. I reviewed it personally with Dave Busking, and at this point in time, it's the best the city can hope for. And as I said, even what we're doing is still in violation of the most recent FCC regulations. I hope that answers your questions.
It does. Thank you. Anything else from the body regarding communications to the public? Mr. Burns?
So John, if I'm hearing you correctly, from a legal perspective, we have to manage our risk with regard to what the city's allowed to do, balancing that against federal law as well as state law.
And that's what this committee did when they passed the new House bill.
Right. So if there is any action, that action probably needs to be social or coming from a resident or set of residents.
I would agree with that.
From an advocacy perspective, and it needs to be measured and strong at that level. It has to come from that, because if the city goes too far, we're at risk of being, of going to court with, with the federal government.
And even the state.
And even the state. So we have to, we have to balance our risk there.
Right.
So as we look at that packet, we have to compare and contrast those opportunities with this, with the information that's been provided. But it does not erase the need for advocacy at the resident level.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. We will now move to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first of these standing committees would be Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, Sally, I don't have a worksheet, a work session sheet.
Work session sheet.
Well, Councilwoman Holt, would you have any items for the next work session, which would be next Monday, the 28th?
No, I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public improvement and facilities. Councilwoman Moore?
I do not have a report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, she's, she's, yeah, no, she doesn't, she just, I'll just write them, she'll check them in the minutes. Thank you. Councilwoman Moore, do you have any items for the next work session?
I do not.
Thank you. Next item is our standing committee's Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have a report at this time.
Yeah, any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 28th. Do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next committee is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that recently, the Hampton County Development Corporation had a luncheon to honor various, well, it was actually their annual meeting, and in connection with that, they often recognize various development projects and individuals that have excelled in things over the past year. And I wanted to mention that they recognize two individuals and companies in Forest Park. One of them is our Economic Development Director, Paul Brim, who had served on their board for a number of years. And they also recognize Magna Machines for the Outstanding Economic Development Award of the Year. Magna Machines, as you know, has purchased the strip mall across the street from it, and is expanding for many millions of dollars to redevelop that strip mall as property and an expansion for itself. So I wanted to mention those people and congratulate them. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 28th. Do you have any to add?
Sure.
Next committee, standing committee report with Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report for community development at this time. However, I would like to make a comment and sending my condolences to the Corrine Police Department and the Wood family for the loss of their father, son, recently. And that would conclude my comments.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time. However, I am available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time.
Next committee report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communication. That is my committee. I have no report. However, I would answer any questions if there are any. Seeing that there are no questions, I have no agenda, agenda items for the 28th for Intergovernmental Relations. Next item on the agenda is item number six, the mayor's report. Just wanted to mention, just for pieces of information, obviously, we all know that it did snow, and it snowed quite heavily. But the thing, the two things I want to point out, not just for this past snow event, but for future snow events, if you... If you noticed on the news, whether it was the local news, or the Weather Channel, or whatever, these snowstorms are unusual in that there seems to be no real pattern, other than everybody gets hit sooner or later. We have in the past, and we continue to, uh, store as much material, meaning salt and brine, as we possibly can. A few years ago, we even built a second barn, so that we would have a great reserve. We still have that reserve, but what, what I want people to know and to try to understand is, when there are major events like this, it may or may not snow in Forest Park, or even in this area. We may get some residuals of it. However, other places are getting hit heavily. As a result of that, there is some backlash, and that backlash would be in terms of the amount of salt nationwide that is available. It's the old thing of supply and demand. There is and is going to be greater demands for salt in the coming spring, summer than there have been in, in past years. Therefore, the bidding for that salt, which is going to be less, less in terms of quant- quantities of salt, is going, the bids, you know, the bids are going to be higher. So we find ourselves in situations where we're probably going to have to spend more money, even more than we budgeted, on salt and, and other material, or we're going to end up getting, getting less because less is going to be available. And the other thing to keep in mind is that this is just, this is a business like any other. The salt producers, they will look to provide the salt to their greater customers first. And the greater customer would be those people who use the most of it and buy the most of it. So what's left is going to be what we'll be looking at, and it's kind of up for grabs. And what we get is going to cost us more than it's cost us in the past. That's one thing. Another thing to keep in mind is, I know this last snow event, it rained first. Streets cannot be treated when it rains, because all that will happen would be wasteful, because the rain is going to wash away the material that's put down there to treat. When you can't and don't pre-treat, then, and the temperature drops enough, it's going to freeze. So you've got a sheet of ice, then no matter whether it's a little snow, a lot of snow that falls on top of that ice, it's going to make, not only driving more treacherous, it's going to make removal more harder to do. So I guess, I'm asking our citizens to keep two things in mind. One, we have a reputation of having very clear streets and streets getting cleared very quickly. We're going to continue to do that to the best of our ability, but we have no control over when these things are going to happen. So just like, I guess, I think this was Saturday night, where it rained, and rained, and rained, and it finally stopped. But 30 minutes after that, if you happened to have been out, within a 35-minute span of time, it went from nothing on the streets to a skating rink. And that, that's unfortunately, there, there is no control over that. The final thing I would say is, also, keep, help us out in terms of your practices. These trucks are huge. It's not like weaving in and out of traffic with your car, your SUV. They simply need a lot of room to maneuver, especially on the smaller residential streets. So if you park on the street, there is better than a good chance that your car is going to be snowed in. It's not something that we, you know, we don't just go around looking for, hey, there's a car, let's just snow it in. But it's just a fact of life. The other thing that you, you need to keep in mind is, there are not very many places for the snow to go when they're plowing the streets. I can't tell you how many calls I get from people who say, well, they piled it all, all in front of my drive. Well, if they don't put it in front of your drive, they're going to put it in somewhere, somebody else's, or it's going to be down at the end of the, of the street. If anybody has any suggestion or idea of what we can do with it, other than what we're doing, I'm sure that Dave and Ray and all of the maintenance people, Councilwoman Moore would be glad to take your suggestions and pass that on. There's something that we just simply don't have a lot of control over. So be a little patient with us, and we'll, we'll continue to do the best we can. That would end my report. I'll try to answer any questions if there are any.
In a field.
Mr. Hodges, the next item on the agenda, City Manager's Report, item number seven, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report that all the departmental reports have been completed, included in the council packet, and also placed on file with the Clerk of Council for Public Inspection. I'll also report that we've provided council a brief update on various activities from the different departments, just for your general information. And again, that's available for public inspection. We're working in a lot of different areas. As you've mentioned, snow removal is one of the top priorities over the last couple of weekends, and we do appreciate the work of the Public Works Department in managing the snow control material that we have. And there's a lot of judgment that goes in, in terms of how we apply material and when we apply it. And it's not based solely on the snow event, but the coming temperatures and how that will affect us, and whether or not we may be able to stretch the supply that we have out to a longer period of time, because you don't know what's going to happen in February and March and things along that line. But they are working hard on that, and we appreciate that work. So that would conclude my report, and I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Questions for the City Manager? Mr. D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the Public Works team, because the unique thing that I saw with these, with these two events that we had, is that typically, you see eight, 10, 12 inches of snow. Historically, in Cincinnati, take a day, day and a half to accumulate. The events that we had recently, they were within three, four hours, in the middle of the night, when everyone's asleep, and yet, our Public Works people were at hand and, and were doing the best that they could to keep up. Even ODOT couldn't keep up with the, with these events, especially the first one. So I know from talking with the Public Works Director, they, he had to bring people out of reserves and get people on, working extra hours. So I just wanted to send my thanks to the team who made that happen, and know and acknowledge them for all the hard work they did over the last two weeks.
Anybody else, any more questions or comments, or questions for City Manager? Hearing none, item number eight, other reports, first of those, Law Director, Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I again addressed a public records request to the police department and resolved the issue of redactions or not. I've also had the opportunity to review and approve ordinances one and two regarding the gas and electric aggregation proposals. Also, as we discussed previously, ordinance three regarding rights of way in the small cell issues. Also, reviewed the mutual aid agreement at the request of the police chief and authorized passage, or recommendation of passage of Resolution one. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report, Clerk of Council, Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, next item, item number nine, new business, motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I'd move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinances number zero one dash 2019 through zero four dash 2019.
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for first time by title only, ordinances number zero one 2019 through zero four 2019. Is there any discussion?
Just that they were posted as required.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, pass a seven zero. First item on the new business, item eight, ordinance number zero one dash 2019. Clerk, please read that ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number zero one dash 2019, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section 4929.26, Ohio Revised Code, directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of ordinance number zero one dash 2019.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number zero one dash 2019. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you. This is the first of two related ordinance items designed to place on the next ballot proposal for voters to consider granting the city authority to establish a natural gas and electric energy aggregation program for the sole purposes of saving monies for the voters in those areas of utility. The city is proposing a opt-out program, and residents actually must have the city, have to give the city authority to implement such a program. In order for these aggregation programs to take place, they need to be on the May ballot. Council will need to approve the ordinance, both ordinances at the, at this meeting, in order to meet the deadlines for February 6th submission. With that, I would urge adoption of ordinance zero one dash 2019.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance zero one dash 2019?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Ordinance zero one dash 2019, pass a seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number zero two dash 2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero two dash 2019, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental electricity program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section 4928.20, Ohio Revised Code, directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for the adoption of ordinance number zero two dash 2019.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance zero two dash 2019. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of the two ordinances related to energy aggregation, specifically electricity. Again, this is an opportunity for citizens to participate in the selection process or the decision process to opt out for energy aggregation for the city. And with that, I would urge the adoption of ordinance number zero two dash 2019.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance zero two 2019?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Ordinance zero two dash 2019, pass a seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, ordinance number zero three dash 2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero three dash 2019, an ordinance to amend chapter 52 rights of way of the city of Forest Park, Ohio's codified ordinances, to address small cell facilities, wireless support structures, related design guidelines, and declaring an emergency to waive the 30-day waiting period to comply with HB 478, protect city right of way and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare.
This is a first reading, uh, this, I believe this, there's no vote here. First reading?
Um, it's going to be passed as an emergency.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, is there a motion? This will be Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of ordinance number zero dash 2019.
Zero three.
Zero three.
I'm sorry, zero three dash 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance zero three dash 2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, basically, we're doing two things with this proposal. The first is to manage the application process for small cell facilities and wireless support structures in the public right of ways in light of House Bill 478, which becomes effective, which became effective August 1st, 2018. And the second part is to enact emergency by basis guidelines for us to follow by the state. In any given time, we can have companies submit requests for approvals, so we will need to be in compliance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk then call the, I'm sorry, Mr. Burns?
So just for clarity, John, I know, as I've read the information about the House bill, there are provisions for, um, um, the fee structure, as well as limitations on what can be and cannot be established and how they are. So would there be other legislation that would require us to recreate that, to, to adopt those fee structures in our ordinances, or would we just automatically fall into?
Well, we have a fee structure already established.
Right. So there wouldn't be, there would not need to be an adjustment to our structure?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Ordinance three, zero three dash 2019, pass a six to one. Next item on the agenda is item D, ordinance number zero four dash 2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero four, zero four dash 2019, an ordinance amending section 156.14 of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park as it relates to fees for work in public right of way and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, I move for the adoption of ordinance number zero four dash 2019.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance zero four dash 2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, basically, this is a general housekeeping type of amendment that basically establishes the fees which utility companies and other companies who have public right of ways have a pay, have to pay as they move forward into the year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on zero four 2019?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Ordinance zero four dash 2019, pass a six to one. Next item on the agenda is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I'd move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolutions number zero one dash 2019 and zero two dash 2019.
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolution number zero one 2019 and zero two 2019. Is there any discussion?
Just that these also were posted as required.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules, pass seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item E, resolution zero one dash 2019. Next item on the agenda is item E, resolution zero one dash twenty nineteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number zero one dash twenty nineteen. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a mutual aid agreement for law enforcement.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, I move that we adopt resolution zero one, twenty nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution zero one dash twenty nineteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Uh, yes, there is. Um, so, for, for many decades, the City of Forest Park has, um, come to be able to rely on the mutual aid and support for our law enforcement, um, when it comes to different matters. Whether that be something immediate, whether that be, um, you know, call center or calls are, are backed up and, and filled. Um, but either way that goes, when there are, when there's a need for police protection services, this, this resolution allows us to reaffirm that mutual aid agreement that we've had for so long. Uh, obviously, there's an extreme cost, um, that we could end up bearing if we don't have this type of mutual aid agreement, um, with our surrounding neighbors for backup. And that has to be done beforehand. It's not one of those situations where we can, um, you know, immediately do it off the cuff. It has to be done, um, in a pre-arrangement sort of fashion, uh, and automatic so that it just, uh, comes into play when it's needed most. The mutual aid agreement simply provides in writing the understanding that all the participating jurisdictions, uh, places like Green Hills, Springdale, and whatnot have, have when we send resources from one community into another community to provide very seamless backup or supplemental assistance, um, when needed. Uh, in the end, this ends up saving our taxpayers money because each participating community ends up being able to provide a higher level of protection services when needed most as in, as opposed to us, you know, taking on the brunt of those and hiring more and, uh, at flex times when we don't need them or having them on staff when we're, we're not in need of them. Um, this also provides for a higher level of safety for staff when backup is necessary, making sure that our men and women are most protected as well as our citizens. The proposed agreement is simply an update of our existing agreement and has been reviewed by our law, law director, and I urge adoption of this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk then please call the role on resolution zero one, twenty nineteen?
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution zero one dash twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item F, resolution zero two dash twenty nineteen. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number zero two dash twenty nineteen. A resolution to concur with the city manager's action to proceed with the demolition of a structure at one-two-nine-four Waycross Road, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-four-zero.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for passage of resolution number zero two dash twenty nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution zero two dash twenty nineteen. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this particular property has been vacant for several years and is in an unlivable, uh, condition due to mold and the required repairs. As a result, it does, it no longer meets the housing standards that are held for the City of Forest Park. The city, the city employees have gone beyond the normal requirements and allowance periods for this property owner, uh, to repair the home, uh, that now represents an unsafe and dangerous site in the neighborhood. It also represents a threat to our health, safety, and welfare to the surrounding properties. And with that, I would urge passage of resolution number zero two dash twenty nineteen.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the role on resolution zero two, twenty nineteen?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Resolution zero two, twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item G, a motion, Councilwoman Collins?
Yes, um, I, uh, I move to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license transfer request to Speedway LLC, DBA Speedway ninety-one seventy-six, one-one-nine-nine Smiley Road, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-four-zero from Delta Oil Company, Inc.
Is there?
Second. Is there a motion?
Been moved in second that we, uh, adopt a motion directing the Clerk of Council that we do not wish to have a hearing on the request for the transfer of a liquor license to Speedway from Delta Oil at eleven ninety-nine Smiley Road. Delta Oil, uh, they were doing business at Marathon Express at the same address. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Collins?
Yes, as we would normally expect, we have received a liquor license permit request from the newly opened Speedway located on Smiley Avenue where the old Marathon Station once operated. The request is for a C-one license, beer only in original sealed containers for carryout only, a C-two license, wine and certain prepackaged mixed drinks in sealed containers for carryout, and see a D-six sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of ten AM or eleven AM and midnight license. Of course, we do not actually issue the, issue or authorize any liquor license permit since that is controlled under the authority of the state through the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. As local government, we merely have the ability to either file an objection which would result in a hearing over the issue before the Liquor Control Board, or we can indicate that we do not request such a hearing in situations such as this one where we believe the business is in good standing and will meet the terms and conditions for issuing the requested licenses. We also do not have the ability to file frivolous objections while knowing that it would only delay or damage the business. The Police Department previously reviewed this matter and has no particular concerns about the request that would be cause for voicing an objection. Therefore, a motion is in order to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request on this particular case.
Any further discussion? Question, Mr. B.
And I think this is more for Ray. Uh, I know we put legislation in place for limits related to the transfer being, I think it was less than a year or less than six months or six months or less. Did they meet that timeline in the ordinance?
Uh, that doesn't apply to this. You're thinking in terms of, uh, bars and restaurants and things along that line.
Right.
Uh, this is strictly under the state regulations and all we can do is express an objection. But you're thinking bars and, and lounges as opposed to, uh, these establishments.
You're right. Yep, thank you.
Uh, just a, a question to a, uh, the license that is being transferred from what was Old Marathon to now Speedway, is the sa- is, the conditions are exactly the same? This is just a going from one name to the other, that, I think John, okay?
They'd have to apply for a new license, even if it was just like a D-six that they didn't have before.
Got you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item H, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
Been moved in second to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item I, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion to convene to an executive session to discuss the, um, candidates and the consideration for a city manager.
Second.
Been moved in second to convene in the executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding the review and consideration of city manager candidates. Any discussion on the motion?
I hope this meeting won't last, you know, all night.
But you in charge. Okay, um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk call the role on the motion to adjourn into executive session?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion to convene in the executive session passes seven zero. Uh, there will be no official business, uh, taken during this meeting. And when this meeting is adjourned, we'll reconvene back here to, uh, basically adjourn our regular council meeting. And so with that, we are now into executive session and we're going right behind, right in the back, not upstairs.